We invite all who would care to stand this once in recitation of the Lord's Prayer followed by a moment of silence. Our Father,
who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. The vine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Now seven o'clock. Shelby City Council meeting is called to order. Are you joining the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Call please, Mr. Trump.
Mr. Robb.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Gates.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Here.
I would now entertain with a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal from January 4, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robertson and a second by Mr. Martin to dispense with the reading of the Journal from January 4, 2021. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
That motion passes. Now comes the time for public comment. And for these last several months, we've been allowing folks to submit public comment to City Hall or a council representative. And we have not received any at City Hall, to my knowledge. Is there any public comment from the floor? If not, we'll move forward then to reports from standing and special committees. The Finance and Personnel Committee, then. Councilman Gates.
Mayor, thank you. We did meet last Thursday afternoon, absent our colleague, Mr. Martin. And at that time and this evening, I do want to extend a sentecity to Mr. Martin and his family and the passing of his mother. We're going to go to the last page where we've begun the past few months looking at income tax. Looking at this page, things look good. But as we get on it, we'll find that things are not as good as what we think. Looking at the top table, which is the cumulative income tax collections by month. We collected 3.8 million in 2020. Compared to the previous year, that's down about 3.4%. But a better comparison is looking at the three-year average, 17, 18, and 19, and we're down about eight tenths of a percent. So that is good. It could be much worse. And looking at December, again, you know, one month in isolation, particularly when you get to the end of the year, the end of the fiscal year. It's, I don't know if it means much, but nonetheless, the figures, $229,000 collected per month, down 12.4% from the prior year and 12.7% for the looking at the three-year average. We're going to go to the second page of the report. And down at the bottom, we're looking at the income tax breakdown. If we look at the individual tax, what self-employed people would pay. And looking at the three-year average, it is up 14.5%. And then at business, it's up 6.5%. But we have to remember that those taxes are paid on 2019 income, not 2020 income. Those two segments of the income tax lag a year behind. And so, you know, when you consider that, those two figures, the 14 and the 6, you know, it's good for what it is, but it does not reflect the current reality. If we look at the withholding, and those numbers are based on 2020 income. Again, looking at the three-year average, we're down 5.5%. what the pass before the Finance Director is to come up with what his estimate will be for revenue for 2021. And it's been my experience over the years, going back decades, that the income tax in Shelby, the collections, we get whacked the year behind, or the year after the, whatever the incident was. In this case, 2020 with COVID-19. So we can expect, I think, a greater whack, particularly with individual and business taxes. So, you know, it might be, you know, if we could expect that the, going into 2021, that the withholding will be what it was in 2020, that would be good. But, you know, if we had a 5.5% drop in withholding, at a minimum, I think that we should project, we, listen to me, the Finance Director, and, you know, he doesn't take his marching orders from me by any means. But I think it would be prudent to look at at least a 5.5% drop in the individual tax and the business tax. Because again, we know that those two indicators drop off the year after the event. So he did give credit, the Finance Director, a meaning to Sarah, and I'm sorry, I know her last name, you'll remind me, Mr. Trump. Again, for her work on city income tax, going after this, I'll use this word, the SCOT laws, the people who have not complied with city income tax laws. And we know that she's doing a lot of work because the law director is bringing those cases into this very room and prosecuting people for failure to pay their city income tax. So let's take a look at the front page. And we're going to look at the general fund in particular, which we always look at in particular, that's nothing new. We look at, we started 2020 with $929,000 free and quicker in the bank. Not, well, in the bank, the cash balance. The cash balance at the end of the year was $1.3 million. Well, people would look at that and say, glory, hallelujah, you know, this is great. But we've got two significant events that happened in the general fund that changed the glory, hallelujah, to, you know, save us, please. What it was is, and we got a memo from the email from the Finance Director, it was included in our packet. We got, the city received a refund on its workers' compensation, which was divided among the various funds which pay workers' compensation. So that was a one-time payment of about a quarter million dollars, $250,000 into the general fund. Well, okay, well, that's only half the story, as Paul Harvey would say. We also, in that memo, we pointed out, we were able to move $220,000 of police wages. Now, I don't know if that includes the add-ons of police wages or just the police wages, if that was included, the taxes and the other things that go along with that. But anyways, $220,000 was shifted from the general fund to the local cares fund. Well, if we take out those two one-time incidents, we started the year with $229,449 in the general fund. If those two things hadn't happened, we would have had in the general fund, instead of the $1.3 million we see there, we would have had $832,244. So the general fund would have lost money. Now, I'm not here to, you know, to wear a crake at all, but I just want us to understand, you know, you look at this money, these numbers, and you think, this is wonderful, you know, we dodged a bullet. No, my friends and colleagues, we did not dodge the bullet. And also, with this workers' comp refund, that made significant difference in the sewer fund, 400, and in the water fund, 500. Now, I don't know what those specific figures were. And I'd ask the Finance Director to, you know, give us a breakdown, send us an email, what those were. But, you know, the water and sewer fund have been touch and go for any number of years now. And, you know, and I know that the Utilities Director and the Utilities Committee have been dealing with this. But again, if we would back out the workers' comp refunds that we got in water and sewer, you know, we would see a picture that's, not that they're rosy, but it would be, you know, the rose would have died. So how's that for a metaphor?
You started.
I know, I did. So they pop into my mind there and they come right out. So anyway, that's the deal. Workers' comp, and I'm not here to kick workers' comp because there's times I've had minor injuries and, you know, they've taken care of me. But I wish, for crying out loud, calculate what our premium should be, let us know, we'll pay it. This deal where they overcharge, and I don't know where they're getting their rates. I don't know if they're pulling them out of the air, you know. Tell us what we need to pay you and be done with this. You know, that's the frustration we have here in the city of Shelby. Multi-napped by every town, there's 18 townships in Richland County. There's, what, eight municipalities, okay? School districts, you know, they're all getting the same thing. They're charged, overcharged upfront and refunded, you know, on the backside. I'm happy for the refund. But, you know, I just, you know, I don't want workers' comp, quite honestly, to have our money and use it. You know, was this a refund on our premium plus interest? Oh, no, you bet your bottom dollar, they did refund us the interest that they earned on our money. So, well, that's, you know, that's the whole story that we need to think about, particularly with the general fund. And particularly going into 2021. It's, you know, what we, the council, and when we meet as a committee as a whole, I think we're going to have our work cut out for us. You know, obviously, you know, the, particularly the people in the general fund, you know, and the police number one, fire number two, court number three, you know, I'm sure they will sharpen their pencils and, you know, get us a realistic budget. And, you know, hopefully one that is within the available refund, within the available revenue. Mayor, if the Finance Director might chime in at any time now, he's welcome to do so.
Yes, sure, I would love to. Oh, thank you. Yeah, I definitely agree with Councilman Gates, pretty much on all fronts. We did definitely get pretty lucky with some of the funds we came in, particularly at the end of the year. Because both those CARES Act monies and the largest portion of the BWC refund or dividend, whatever they call it, came in, well, December. So that's nice. You know, we definitely would have taken a hit, which was kind of expected from March. And so I'm glad that we kept expenses in as much as we did. And I also agree that, I'm hoping that withholding will be similar to 2020 because currently all of our major employers are operating. You know, and I think that the 5.5% minimum reduction in the business and the individual side is probably very realistic. It might even be a little more than that with the business side as the expenses related to PPP may not be deducted. So I think a lot of our businesses that came out okay this year because of some of the assistance will still show losses for their tax returns this year. So I'm not counting a whole lot of, you know, I'm not counting anything exceptionally good from the business returns by far. So we will be calculating that. And it's tough because, really, since March, there's been all kinds of changes at the federal level that impact us greatly. And they flip back and forth. And, you know, they release something, they say one thing, and they change their minds. So it is a budgeting nightmare. I've heard that with the next relief package, that there will be assistance for state and local governments. I don't know what that is yet. I imagine that that will probably hit the Florida, the House later this week. So we may be able to expect something from them. I'd rather go through our process without the expectation. And then if we're happily rewarded by a random check like we were this year, great. But, so it's an up and down roller coaster that we've been through. We're going to go through for at least the next year. I spoke with Jessica Riven about some of the economic developments and such. And, you know, she's kind of the same opinion that she thinks that probably this year there will be some, a lot of assistance for businesses. And then 2020 will probably be where they get hit. But I would also imagine that we won't see revenue from those assistances to the businesses. So it's going to be an interesting appropriations discussion. And I'm glad that, especially, thank you, Mr. Hensman, for getting me the largest chunk of the appropriations started already. So we're moving as fast as we can on it to kind of get something on paper so that we can adjust it and adjust it and adjust it again. Sorry, long story short, I agree completely.
Mayor, I want to look at line 400 of the sewer fund. We started with $350,000 in cash. We ended with $213,000 in cash. So how much of that was because of the workers' comp refund? That's what we need to, you know, we'll take a look at when we get that specific figure from the Finance Director. Likewise, water, $198,000, $287,000. So it was going in a better direction than sewer. But again, what was the impact of unexpected workers' comp refund data? One thing that we'll drop down to, 715, the hospitalization fund, $397,000 to begin the year, $620,000 to end the year. Depending how that goes, we might get a situation toward the end of the year where we can defer perhaps some payments. I think they like that around $800,000, I believe, is the figure before they'll consider allowing us to suspend payments. Let's, we'll continue, the next page. The general fund, you can see revenues versus expenditures. And again, those, you know, considered the workers' comp and the cares requirement. We have a potential for three retirements in the safety departments in police and fire this year. The Deputy Finance Director said she's, you know, heard some conversations, but she's not yet received anything from police and fire pension. That's when it's official, when a person goes down there and says, I want to retire on such and such a date. The next page, we get, we can see the, looking at utilities in comparison in sewer, for 2020, expenditures exceeded revenues. In water, the revenues exceeded expenditures by $90,000. In electric fund, expenditures were greater than revenues, but that's anticipated because of our rate reductions to try and get the balance there down to a tenable amount. The next page, the cash investment reconciliation statement as of the end of December. You had in the city treasury that date, in the four financial institutions. We have a little bit of the Sogarash Fund. Mayor, for under personnel, you informed us that Mayor Combs is home and healing.
Chief Combs.
Sorry, what did I say?
Mayor.
So Chief Combs, I'm sorry. My combo is in the wrong place.
No problem.
Anyways, Chief Combs is home and healing. I don't know if that you can pry over and assure at this point that he had an accident and broke his leg. as far as vaccinations, Phase 1B is underway, and everyone in City Hall is helping. When I picked up my agenda on Friday, when you said everyone is helping, nine, seven people were answering the phones for people calling and trying to get appointments at the senior center. And is where the shots are being given. And I'm sure, Mayor, your report will give us greater detail about how many people are on the list. The signing for the FOP contract was scheduled for Friday. Shelby Fire Department has no openings at present. Shelby Police Department has one vacancy for a patrol officer. So, Mayor, that was a report on the personnel side of the committee's business. I'm happy to attempt to answer anyone's questions.
Mr. Trump.
Sorry, I just have one question. You had said we need a plan on 5.5% in individual and business. What was the feeling about projecting our withholding? Because obviously withholding is a large chunk of it. So we can project a 5.5% drop in individual and business. But that only comes to about 30% of the overall. So what are we anticipating projecting for withholding?
Mr. Trump.
I'd actually like to hope that withholding will be similar to the 2020 numbers. Right now, it seems like most of our manufacturers and other businesses are open and returning to their level of productivity. So I might put a little bit of cushion to be conservative on it. But I don't expect a massive drop from 2020.
Mr. Trump.
Mayor, that's a case of where the parts have to equal the whole. And if you look at the parts, and, you know, we would say, oh, well, it's only 1% change. Well, that's not realistic. So, again, this is where the Finance Director, you know, you can say look into his crystal ball, but, you know, consult with business leaders, consult with his colleagues in other cities around. And, you know, it's a, there's a case where collaboration would be a very good thing. You know, why should we think that everything's going to be sweet, this and that? And Shelby, whenever a town around us tells us, you know, it's not going to be that way. So that's, you know, and he doesn't have to do that just for the general fund. He gets to do it for all of these funds here. So with a couple of exceptions, there's a couple of numbers that come directly from the county auditor, that come from the state. And those are, county auditor tells us what the estimated revenue will be. I think that's for the gas tax, and there's one other. So, Mayor, that is my report. At this point, I would move that the combined financial statement and the cash investment and reconciliation statement, both dated 12/31/2020, be received, placed on file, and posted to the city's website.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin as a combined financial statement dated December 31, 2020, and the cash investment reconciliation statement dated December 31, 2020. Both be dated and received, placed on file. I'm sorry, both be received, placed on file, and posted to the city website. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
That motion passes. Are there any other comments or questions from Mr. Gates regarding these reports? Thank you, Mr. Gates.
You're very welcome.
Moving forward, we'll have here from Councilman Martin, Utility Streets Committee.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Utility Streets Committee was not able to meet again due to me being at a funeral on Thursday, but we were able to meet today at 3:30. So I appreciate everyone being able to accommodate that. And thank you. We met today, and I'll try to move through this as quickly as I can. Street paving project, we have update to the bid. Final preparations being made to the 2021 street paving bid document. During recent review of the bid specification, the engineering department noted some necessary items that were not included on the itemized material list to include calculations for the materials being populated. And so upon receipt of the cost, materials will be incorporated into the project costs. We are anticipating a change to the street first resurfacing area as originally designed. After discussing the necessary modifications to the bid specifications, the potential change could actually be beneficial due to other utility and construction projects scheduled and forthcoming to a section of the project area. More information will be provided on receipt of the revised engineers' estimated cost of the project. But as of now, it's looking more than lightly. The only area affected by that change will be on High School Avenue from the bridge going north to Main Street. Upon final review, legislation will be prepared and presented to council. We are still on schedule to have a bid package presented to council in February. Ditch petition update. The administration and Councilman McLaughlin are gathering the necessary information to file the ditch petition of interest. Informational meetings are being held, four meetings since December 21. Richland Soil, Water Conservation District representatives and Richland County engineer are assisting with informational gathering process. Petition is to be filed with clerk of the Board of County Commissioners. Petition will be a joint county filing with both Richland and Crawford counties involved. Petition is filed in Richland County, but will be sent to Crawford County Commissioners via the clerk of the Board of County Commissioners. Filing needs to be presented to the clerk before March 3, 2021, to be grandfathered under the current ditch petition language. A new language within the ditch petition filings will bring additional cost for the bond. The projected ditch petition filing date is tentatively scheduled to be submitted during the week of February 15. This window can move till later in the month of February if necessary, but filing needs to be submitted before March 3. Petition to be submitted to county officials is being drafted currently. An informational letter is being written as well and is planned to be inserted into the next utilities bill to provide city residents some details on the ditch petition. The informational letter to be sent to the property owners outside the city utilities is still being discussed on how that notice will be delivered. An outside party will be seeking additional signatures for the petition. Communications from city and county officials will be extremely important to relay the proper information about the workings of the ditch petition. And as the project develops, information will be provided by mailings to property owners, public hearings, Facebook Live meetings, and possible Zoom meetings if public hearings are not permitted, city of Shelby website, Richland Soil, Water Conservation District website, Black Fork Cleanup Project Facebook page, and local newspapers. Stormwater management surcharge. This is a continuation of the discussion for the implementation of stormwater management surcharge. The development of the surcharge is being stopped to provide funds for stormwater-related projects or repairs. The surcharge would help fund the stormwater-related projects to maintain repair to the existing infrastructure. Numerous calls are received every year from residents identifying stormwater issues. Many items identified in the 2009 smoke test have still not been addressed as funding is needed to resolve those noted issues. The amount to the stormwater surcharge is as follows. Senior citizen, disabled, $1.5. Residential and commercial, also $1.5. Industrial, $3.50. Funding for the proposed surcharge is being chiselled from the dissolved water capital improvement surcharge. So that surcharge would be divided into the two new surcharges. The two new surcharges equal the same surcharge amount from the dissolved water improvement surcharge. And those would be populated from the dissolved surcharge. That's basically replacing That's basically replacing one with the other. It's not an increase. Everyone should have the information on all of those amounts. There is one caveat, the industrial surcharge. The only difference from the other water, capital water surcharge to this one is the industrial surcharge increases just slightly. I think from nine dollars and seventy-five cents to ten dollars because of the footprint of the industry, so we need to adjust for that. All right. After discussing the proposed surcharge, the finance department, we agree that the requested proposed surcharge followed below outline. Transparency of the surcharge, surcharge will be listed on the utilities bill under the title of storm water management. The funds collected from the surcharge will be posted to the four oh two fund, sewer improvement fund under a new revenue line identified as storm water management. The projected annual collection from the surcharge is approximately eighty-five thousand dollars and the surcharge collections would be dispersed from the expense line within four oh two fund sewer improvement fund. And then we will be, the committee decided to sponsor that legislation will be prepared, presented to council in the future. All right. Information on the pollinating field. So in words, Mr. Insman, this is kind of a fun thing we were doing and pretty excited to see it. The development of a pollinating field for bees and butterflies. So this is a part of our hope to become a bee city. And that's B-E-E. I think we're a A-plus city myself. I can't let the mayor do it all. Anyways, discussions led to research, which then led to outreach for some parties that could help bring that idea to fruition. So the people that are helping us along this road are the Richland Soil, Water Conservation District, Bees and Butterfly Habitat Fund, and then Randy Eisenhower, who is the city of Shelby's school Bo-Bag instructor. And he was the cooperator of the year for Richland Soil, Water Conservation District last year, I believe. And so the site of the project is fairly easy. We knew the acreage on the west side of number two reservoir was available at city-owned property. That land is the former site of number one reservoir. Field is large, plays sun and would provide a great location with surroundings, the river, mature trees and is adjacent to the walking path around reservoir number two. The field is currently being mowed and Mr. McLaughlin and Mr. Insman have been discussing for a while that they wanted to find a way to stop mowing the entire field and this project will fulfill that request. So the next step for development, they have to do soil sample tests and then they, based on those, they recommend a native seed mix for the site. That seed mix is then discussed with Bee and Butterfly Habitat Fund. They, the Bee and Butterfly Habitat Fund will supply the seed mix for free. It's a five-year commitment. And share soil samples with Randy Eisenhower and then there's a scheduled visit with the RRS WCD as well and then develop specific planning and design for the site. Site design is still being developed, but there is some insight into the discussions. They want to create a field that will allow for habitat for both bees and butterflies. Outside perimeter of the habitat field could be for bees, inside habitat area designed for the butterflies, specifically for the monarch butterfly. Or another idea is they could do that in haps. There you go. And there's also discussions making a walking path around the pollinating field, bird boxes and benches, et cetera. But more information will be provided as that develops. All right. Before us this evening, we have the late fee waiver, utility payment late fee waiver. Obviously, we passed that legislation at the previous city council because we had trouble with mail. And the thought has been going back and forth for a while that obviously the utility office has zero discretion in this. So if somebody has really good reason why they're late, sorry, you're late, you still get a late fee. So we came up with an idea that one time per calendar year, everybody would have basically a waiver to use for a late fee, for whatever reason. Initial language, we thought of using it at the discretion of so-and-so or whatever, but we just felt that was too much of a burden on the utilities department to try to separate the wheat from the chaff, so to speak. And so we just decided to do a blanket, one time per calendar year waiver. And we'll talk about that more as legislation comes up. But the customers would need to request that late fee. It would not be automatically programmed into billing software. And the late fees are obviously currently now applied when a bill is received after the fifteenth of the month period. So with the mail and other issues, there you have it. Approximately nine hundred customers every month are late at making their utilities payment. Some are due to unforeseen reasons, some are due to delays in the post service and some are just habitual. They're always late, so. Utility office personnel have been receiving frequent calls from customers that are not receiving their bill until the second week of the month or receiving it even in some cases after the due date due to their mail. So there are approximately fifty-two hundred utility bills that are mailed out every month. Approximately fifteen thousand dollars is collected every month from late fee payments. The late fee amounts as a percentage, ten percent water bill, ten percent sewer bill, five percent electric bill. Historically, utility bills are mailed out in the last business day of the month. To help compensate for the extra days needed to receive the bill by USPS, the office staff, we are looking into mailing the bills out earlier if at all possible to try to accommodate for that. Legislation has been drafted, authorized mayor or is heard does need to allow the utility office personnel to waive late fee payment one time per calendar year per count of quarter. And the legislation has been prepared for this evening. Mayor.
Mr. Martin, are there any comments or questions for Mr. Martin regarding this report? Thank you very much. Moving on then to safety committee, Councilman Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Safety committee met on January sixth. Very briefly, fire news, Chief Thomas reported that Shelby Fire would like to apply for the AFG grant again this year. If granted, it would be used for turnout here. And that will show up tonight as resolution one, twenty twenty-one. So that will be of further consideration tonight. And other than that, they're just kind of working on the end of the year stuff and getting ready for the new year. Health news, mosquito grant is coming up soon, so that will be on our agenda at some point. Don't know exactly when, but we will see that in the near future. And Gates already talked about COVID-19 vaccinations. Time of that meeting, they were on their way and it would have been the next week that they were going to show up here. Mr. Gates asked the question about volunteers for paperwork and signing people up in that and it was, you know, they could certainly help if anybody wants to help. They call City Hall and see if there's some way that they can be used as far as that goes, as far as registration, things like that. And so that's really what I have.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Roberts in regard to his report? May I just comment on that Councilman Gates brought up about volunteers helping? On the intake table would need that opportunity. And we do have a volunteer nondisclosure form that we have ready now for anyone wanting to perhaps put in an hour or two. The vaccination clinic will, as it starts right now, will run from twelve to four when the vaccines are available. So if someone's interested in perhaps volunteering there, please contact the health department at City Hall, okay? But thank you for that idea. Mr. Gates. All right, any no questions or comments? All right, now we'll move forward then to reports of city officials, of mayor's report. Happy to give that. Past couple of weeks have flown by with typical mayor role duties and associated meetings, a lot of them Zoom meetings. I do want to compliment our Shelby City Health Department on a successful rollout of our vaccination distribution, starting in earnest today. We have administered approximately sixty-seven doses thus far. We have sessions scheduled for the next three days, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, from twelve to four o'clock at the Shelby Community and Senior Center. As of today, we have received a total of three hundred doses of the Moderna vaccine. We had originally had two hundred and two, I'm sorry, one hundred more came in today. As was mentioned earlier with City Hall assistance, we have fielded some seven hundred phone calls requesting vaccinations. And that is the very first step is to get your name on the list. So we have taken those names and phone numbers, we've compiled a database by age bracket and have been methodically returning phone calls, setting up appointments for individuals in this, and right now in this environment, eighty and up to receive their vaccinations. We want to thank the Shelby Community and Senior Center for being a very willing host for the vaccination clinics and want to give a special note of recognition to Pam Allwater, the director there. She has been terrific to work with and has worked very hard to help us get things set up there at the Shelby Community and Senior Center. As of now, again, we are scheduling appointments between twelve noon and four P.M. as vaccination supplies allow. We're asking two things of our citizens. Number one, please be patient. We can only dispense vaccines as they are made available to us. Health departments all across the state of Ohio are facing the same issue and are in the same boat. Number two, please seek out alternate sites which are making vaccines available. It's my understanding that Ohio Health, Avita and select pharmacies are scheduling people for age-appropriate vaccinations. So perhaps by making a few phone calls, you can get your vaccines sooner. We are moving at a good pace, naturally being the very first day of something that is brand new to all of us. We just wanted to make sure we had everything in order and we can move people through in a, in a good fashion and expedite vaccinations. And that all came to fruition today. So we will be fine tuning, but so we're vaccinating approximately forty-four people per day at that rate and we're going to see if we can maybe speed it up a little bit. But that's where we are right now. And again, remember that all the folks that are receiving the first dose will receive their booster dose or their second dose some twenty-eight days later. So it's going to get, it's going to get very, very busy. But I commend everyone that's been working, been working very hard, working together and just ask, again, patience of our citizens. Are there any comments or questions in regard to my report? Thank you. If not, we'll move forward to Mr. Crum, Director of Finance. You gave a long mini-report, but if you want to maybe add anything else to that.
Thank you. Yeah, I won't crunch any more numbers. You guys have already looked probably more than you wanted to. We have closed the books for twenty twenty now. We're, we moved through all the reports. We've already started with the gap conversion work and, and I don't know, a half a dozen other reports. I'm sure that the auditories will be contacting us shortly to begin that process. And then, of course, we've started working on appropriations. We're keeping busy as ever. That's pretty much all I have, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Crum. Any comments or questions for Mr. Crum in regard to his report? If not, we'll move forward to Mr. Easter Law.
A report, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Move forward from Law Director to Project Coordinator, Mr. Geis.
Thank you, Mayor. Just more of the same from the last meeting. They're continuing on the old drive-through and we're working to get two thousand twenty-one projects ready, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Geis in regard to his report? Now we'll move forward to new business. Is there any new business to report for council this evening? Hearing up, we'll go forward to unfinished business, future use of the Main Street Fire Station. There is no change to the status in which we find ourselves today, other than superior air and ground are working well out of there and seeing more and more of the new vehicles here in town as well. Any questions? Yeah, Mr. Martin.
So we obviously know that this is a long-term feasible relationship for the city, just leasing it in perpetuity. Is there any timeline the administration can give us to when we'll start looking at handing over the reins or actual, what's the long-term projection for that space?
I can't give you a projection for, but we will revisit some of the same topics we discussed with the former ownership and see if there is an interest in, and then maybe changing, changing the status. I'll try to have a report by next meeting, at least some of those initial conversations.
Yeah, it would certainly be nice to at least have, even if it changes, just a general timeline of what we're looking at. Because I just don't want to keep kicking the can down the proverbial road because, you know, that road ends off in a cliff and so I want to make sure it'll be, get done. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And for the discussion at that point? Exterior property maintenance, fifty-nine West Main Street. I did not talk with Ms. Ribbon today. Oh, Mr. Gates may have something.
I did say, I asked her today. She said they're still waiting on the final survey. The house place has not been surveyed for years, so Tax Map Office requires that. Once they get that, it's approved by Tax Map. Obviously, they'll send it back for one more round of search through the title or the recorder's office just to make sure that everything's free and clear and then, and then schedule closing.
Thank you for that update, Mr. Gates. All right. Any other unfinished business? Hearing up, let's move forward to legislation.
Orders number one, two thousand twenty-one, amending section two hundred fifty-eight point zero one, salaries of members of council of chapter two hundred fifty-eight, elected official salaries of the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby.
Move second reading.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts for the second reading of orders number one, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Orders number one, two thousand twenty-one, passes the second reading.
Orders number two, two thousand twenty-one, enacting chapter two hundred sixteen, credit card policy of the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby.
Move for second reading.
Second. We have a motion on Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for the second reading of orders number two, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion. Mr. Robb.
I did send an email to the Law Director about my issue with section twenty-six zero nine, and I'm afraid it wasn't very timely with that and didn't give him a whole lot of time to get an answer. Hopefully he'll have something for me before the next meeting.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Orders number two, two thousand twenty-one, passes the second reading.
Orders number four, two thousand twenty-one, amending chapter one thousand four hundred sixty-six, flood damage prevention, section one thousand four hundred sixty-six point two four, use and development standards for flood hazard reduction, residential structures of the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby, Ohio.
Move for the first reading.
We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. McLaughlin for the first reading of orders number four, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion. Mr. Geis.
This probably looks very familiar, the ordinance we passed last year. When I presented this to you the last time, I had it reviewed by the state DNR Floodplain Office. It met their criteria, however. When I sent it on to FEMA for community rating system, they wanted the words added, including machinery and equipment. So that's the only change from the ordinance before.
Thank you for that input. Further discussion? Mr. Martin.
So if I'm understanding correctly, Mayor, the word is the parenthetical, including machinery, equipment, manufactured homes, that's the change. machinery, equipment, manufactured homes, that's the change?
Mr. Geis?
The previous ordinance had manufactured homes in there. This is just adding, including machinery and equipment.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Robb?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Gates?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Orders number four, 2021, passes as first reading.
Resolution number one, 2021, authorizing the mayor as director of public safety of the City of Shelby to apply to the Fire Department Individual Equipment Grant for the purchase of turnout gear and declaring an emergency.
You resolution should be taken on the pass.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of Resolution one, 2021, discussion. Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I received a phone call today from the chief. He has a county life chiefs meeting this evening, so that's why he's not here. This is a grant that the city has applied for before. The likelihood of being funded is very slim, because the grant is meant, is intended for smaller rural fire departments. So, but, you know, you can get zero funding, zero funding for grants you don't apply for, so you apply anyway. It's for turnout gear, and the attachment shows that the bunker coats, which, I'll tell you, the bunker coat, one of them costs $1,350. I was really taken aback by that. And also applying for bunker pants and suspenders, that's $885. One has to wonder how much is the pants and how much is the suspenders, but anyway, obviously, this is very specialized equipment, you know, or clothing, you know, meant to protect people who run toward fires when anyone's natural inclination is to run away from a fire. So we want them to have the best possible equipment, but, you know, I'm sure the chief will send it in, and we'll see if we get a ear john letter or a check in the mail.
Thank you, thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Robb?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Gates?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Resolution number one, 2021, passes.
Resolution number two, 2021, authorizing the mayor as director of public service for his or her designee to have the ability to waive the utility payment late fee one time per calendar year for a residential, commercial, or industrial account holder.
Move the resolution, take it on the pass.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passage of Resolution number two, 2021, discussion. Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I think it's an excellent idea. Any one of us could, you know, either through our fault or through no fault of ours, you know, have a presentable rate. Mr. Martin explained that quite well. So it's a wonderful idea. My question is, though, is I wonder why this is a resolution and not an ordinance amending chapter 242, which specifically is for the director of public service.
I don't have the answer to that right now. Mr. Martin? I guess the feeling was this is the best, most speedy way to accomplish it legally. I have no objection to doing the ordinance instead, but I don't know, I don't know if Mr. Insman can shed light on the, I don't know.
It was probably a resolution after a conversation. Other than that, I really don't have any other explanation as to why resort to the resolution, other than the simplest form to move forward with this language.
Mr. Gates? I, that makes perfect sense. This is the quickest way to accomplish what we want. I like things in the ordinance book, you know, because this doesn't, this affects rates. You know, all the other rates are in there. What I would probably do is, assuming this passes this evening, is take this and put it into an ordinance form amending chapter 242 of the codified ordinances.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah, and, you know, thinking about it, I think that's a good avenue just to ensure the perpetuity of it. So I'm very minimal agreeable with that, and I think that will accommodate.
It's like, Mayor, it's like the, I think it's the Prado commercial where they were asking about whatever, and the Italian response is, it's in there. You know, it's always good to have things in the book, because, you know, it's there.
Thank you, thank you for that. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Robb?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Gates?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Orders number two, 2021, passes. Now come to miscellaneous business, any miscellaneous business to grow up for council tonight? Mr. Martin?
Mayor, thank you very much. As has been reported in various media outlets, I was in DC on January 6th. Normally, what we mean, except for the fact that the occurrence is what occurred on January 6th in Washington, DC. And so as a matter of course, I just wanted to make myself available to my fellow council members who may have questions pertaining to that event, and make myself available to answer those questions freely. I feel that I did nothing wrong, but willing to answer those questions. So with that, I move that council go into a committee at the hall where I can answer such questions if they are indeed there.
Is there a second? Hearing no second, the motion to go into committee at the hall fails. Any further miscellaneous business? Mr. Gates?
Mayor and council, yea.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for adjournment. Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Robb?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Gates?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Count, if that motion passes, council adjourns at 7:57. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Mayor, did you get my email on the approval of that lead space agreement? I sent it to the captain.